Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, February 4th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Before I take roll call, I'd just like to offer a moment of silence for former Town Councilor Arnold Alalani, who passed away on January 30th, 2019, at the age of 91. Mr. Alani, I had the pleasure of serving with him in a variety of capacities. Most notably, he was the Superintendent of Schools from 1989 to 1993 and retired from the Southbridge Public Schools. He had served on the Southbridge Town Council, the Town's Long Rage Planning Committee, the High School Scholarship Committee, as well as, I believe, the Building Committee for the new schools. He was a champion of our town, he was on the Scholarship Committee, so he would be deeply missed, and I'll offer this moment of silence.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Secretary?
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor DePietro?
Present.
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Manor?
She's excused at the moment, she'll be delayed.
Counselor Nash?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
We have a quorum. Item 3, Consider and Accept the Town Council Minutes of Monday, January 28th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steves.
We did have a meeting a couple of days ago. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it because of that weird snowstorm we had. But the items number 11 and 12 were on that meeting, and both of them were approved unanimously, for those who were there.
Thank you.
I said item numbers 11 and 12 were on the last GenGov meeting, and they were both approved unanimously.
Department of Public Works, Counsel DePietro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Meeting was held at Department of Public Works Subcommittee and the Town Council on January 31st regarding the Operations Manager position be compensated by salary when newly filled. Based on the information provided in packages marked PT-9 and Schedule 1, members of the Subcommittee voted unanimously to recommend the Council for approval.
Thank you, Counsel. Education and Human Services, Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Meeting of Education, Human Services Subcommittee jointly with the Town Council was held on January 31st. The result of that meeting is an action item, number 9 on tonight's agenda. One other agenda item from that meeting didn't come forward, it'll come back to Subcommittee in the near future, and at this time, no future meetings are as yet scheduled with the exception of Bay Path Budget Meeting, which is tentatively scheduled with Mr. LaFleche and Mr. Yakabuchi for March 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We did not have a meeting since our last Town Council meeting. I do have one scheduled for 12th February, I believe it's in the Veterans Room. That's all I have.
Thank you. Protection of Persons and Properties, Counsel Manor. I do know Counsel Manor has a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, February 7th, at 7:00 PM in the George Parent Community Room. Among those items are approximately eight appointments to the Call Fire Department, also continued discussions on the hiring process for the Fire Department as previously discussed in the meeting. Chairman's announcements. First, several weeks ago, I mentioned that we were forming a Bylaw Review Committee as per the Charter. We're looking for five citizens to fill positions on that Bylaw Committee. To date, we have not received any names through the Town Manager's Office. If anybody's interested in serving on the Town Bylaw Committee, please send in a letter of interest so that we can fill that position. It is an important position to review our bylaws. Today, late this afternoon, we received the resignation of Mark Jewell from the Southbridge Housing Authority. I would ask that my Counselors allow me to put a agenda item later on to accept that resignation so it can be forwarded for the Town election properly with the Town Clerk's Office. Okay, we'll get it through later on in the agenda, but, so if we can remember note. On another note, Ken Camer, our plan is, will be leaving us, regrettably. I know some councils, I'm sure we'll talk about that, but in the short time that I've known Ken, he's been a wealth of knowledge and an asset to our council. He worked very hard with us on the zoning bylaws, so I know he leaves us in better shape when it comes to our zoning maps and our zoning process. Regrettably, I'm sad to see him go, I wish him the best of luck. Also, our executive assistant had contacted me last week that the, as you're aware, that we're doing the Wells School Redevelopment Project that has come forward from the Council, and it's in the process. The people that are doing that project, we're looking for letters of support so that we could send that into the Undersecretary of the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. She'd asked if I wanted to join in the letter on behalf of the Council, but my thought was that we should send a separate letter expressing our support. So there is a drafted letter, which is very similar to the Town Managers', just looking for unanimous consent to send that on behalf of the Council if there's any objection. Does anybody have anything? So we'll send that letter, I'll forward a copy to you. It's just a letter of support stating that this is a project that's important, we've all been briefed on it, so I think the more information that we can get, I believe it's down the home stretch, so hopefully in the spring, we'll have some information on that. And with that, that's all I have this evening. Mr. Town Manager, announcements?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick item, just to let people know. I mean, I think we all realize that we're trying to work on developing a new animal control shelter. I just wanted to let you all know, the request for quotes is going out today to get an engineer for that project. We put together a quest for quotes that provides a lot of the current data that was given to us, a description of the current facility, as you know, there's a storage kind of building over there, also some design, a basic conceptual design plan that was given to us as well, and then the map of the site location, so we'll be sending those out this week. We have, I've actually got on the phone and called three specific engineers that are local to see if they would be interested in bidding out, they've all told me that they would be, so I'm hoping to see some good proposals for that particular project. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just so I want to go back to Chairman's announcements real quick, if I may. Just as an announcement, last week, the Fire Station Building Committee held a meeting in which we received the feasibility study for the new fire station. I just want to inform my fellow Counselors that I've scheduled for the next meeting on February 25th, for that committee to give a presentation with the architects at the Town Council meeting to brief the entire council and the town. So that'll be at the regularly scheduled Town Council meeting, that they'll present those findings so that we can make decisions as to how we will best move forward on that proposal. Okay? Thank you for your indulgence on that. Swearing in, presentations, we have none this evening. Citizens forum, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the Council? Anyone? Seeing none? Item 9, Vote to Approve the Transfer of $4,000 from Account Number 6785 Landfill Reimbursement Fund to Account Number 1.0512.5341 Advertising Promotions to Provide Funding for a Town-Wide Mailing of Educational Materials Regarding Proper Curbside Recycling.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This item came before Education, Human Services Subcommittee last Thursday, and it was very closely tied to the presentation done at our last Council meeting in regards to recycling. This item did receive unanimous support of the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 10, Vote to Appropriate Free Cash in the Amount of $55,000 as a Grant Match for a Fuel Farm Replacement at the Airport.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Recommendation? Counsel Steves?
Yeah, that came to GenGov last week, it was unanimously approved. Do you have anything, since you are there, and I unfortunately was not, do you have anything you would like to say, other than Dave?
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may. At this point in time, I highly recommend this go through. It was a great brief from Ron, a few others from StanTech, and I know we've been talking about it for quite some time. It's, the current fuel tank that they do have is, it's end of its life, it's going to have to get replaced. One thing about this new fuel tank, and Ron, if I mess it up in any way, please correct me, there'll be a tank, I believe 5,000 gallons being placed up there. Also, because there's possible growth for that airport in the future, they will set up another platform for maybe jet fuel or for other fuel down the road. Am I correct on that one? Then I can give a little bit of history to myself.
They'll have the platform all built for a second tank, and if our fuel sales increase to a level where we need more fuel, we could drop in a second tank, but everything will be there, and the other choice would be, we go to Jet A, because we've been getting a lot of new traffic with turboprop airplanes in there. And there's a lot of helicopter practice that happens at the airport in the summertime almost every night. Matter of fact, I talked to the Commander and Rhode Island National Guard, and they're the ones that normally come. They were going to come the other day, and the airport was closed because of the snowstorm, so they backed off, but we had a good conversation. So, it's possible, because they're between Southbridge and Rhode Island, and then we have a unit from Westover, a medical evacuation group, that goes between there and the Cape, and we're midpoint. So, a couple of years ago, I had two exercises with them. One was an evacuation exercise, you never know if we're going to have a disaster here in Southbridge, and the airport is a perfect place to stage an evacuation. And then the second one was a medical evacuation. I had Sturbridge, Charlton, Webster, Dudley, State Police, and the Sturbridge Police, and the Southbridge Police up there. We did an exercise with Blackhawks.
So, Mr. Chairman, real quick, I just want to mention, if I'm wrong here, this $55,000 is 9% of the actual budget itself. Originally, you guys had requested a 5%, but I think by state law, had to be 9%. It'll also be above ground, it won't be, they're going to have to take the old tank out, but they have had issues in the past where it stopped because of electrical storms and all that kind of stuff. So, if I messed up anywhere, Ron, please let me know, you're the expert on this one, but it was a great brief, I thank you.
I can expand on what you said. The FAA, Mass DOT Aeronautics Division, and the Town are the three people that are contributing to this project. Typically, when we get a grant, we're responsible for 20%. On this one, it's 9%. It's a $600,000 project. The FAA is going to contribute $392,103. The State is going to contribute $153,247, and our contribution of 9% would be around $55,000.
Any further questions? Counsel Steves?
Yeah, one quick one from you through to the Town Manager. Ron, how much do we have in free cash right now?
Remember, the free cash certification has just happened recently, so we have close to $1,070,000 in new free cash, which will be allocated in our budget process for a variety of items. This is the first of those items, the new free cash is here.
Okay. And the other thing, I just wanted to point out that since we have the figures in front of us saying that the local match is actually $54,649.48, should we make the actual motion read that? Since the agenda item says $55,000, but the actual number we have in front of us is 54 and change.
I mean, I think the answer is they just rounded it off, just in case it's a little bit, I don't think it has to be exact. If it does, we're just going to sweep the count and the area and it'll go back in. But they usually give a little bit more just in case something happens, that's why they do that. It's up to you, I mean, you could, but if all of a sudden it goes over by 200 bucks, you're going to come back, so it gives you a little bit of room.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I kind of answered what Counsel Steves brought up. The StanTech guy did talk about that. There's a fudge factor in there, just in case something does happen, and use it, then it goes right back.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further, Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Town Manager. Thank you for the quick update on free cash recertification. This project, I'm sure, was developed long ago, or at least the idea, the notion, might have been developed, but I wonder where it actually falls in the pecking order, if you will, or the order of priorities. If we have $1.7 million in free cash, is this a wise use of this amount at this stage? Or do we have other priorities that might be a little bit more appropriate? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do think this is an appropriate use of free cash for this. They push this up, a lot of times you want to take advantage of when state grants are available. So, Mr. Henry from StanTech called me up to ask me about this. He felt it was an important program that the Airport Commission, the Airport, had been working on for some time. I'm not sure that it was due in this year's budget, but because the state grant money was available, he called me up and said, you know, if you have the matching funds, this would be a perfect opportunity to do this project, it's important and we think we should do it. So, yes, I do think it's important, I think it's timing, I think we want to take advantage of when state funds are available for projects, and that's why I decided to move quickly on this. The reason it's here before you today, because it usually would be in our free cash package when we go through it, is because it is timing in nature in terms of the application process. So in order to get it done, I had to put it into this Town Council meeting to get it done in terms of the application process for the State.
Thank you.
Counsel Steves? A quick question through you to Ron Pluff. Where does this actually fit in terms of the Airport's master plan?
This project, let me back up just a little bit. Every year in the fall, the Airport Commission and myself go to a meeting with the FAA and with the State, and we plan out future projects. This project was scheduled for next year. However, last summer, since they put up the new building, there was some wiring that had to get done from the fuel farm to the new building, and something funky is going on there, because we had two very severe lightning strikes. So I don't know if it's a grounding problem, I don't know what the problem is. And the first event cost us $2,200. The second one, they had to replace a circuit board. And then, the second one was a relay that blew, and so you're talking $3,100. Now, also, every year, we have to get an annual inspection, and the inspection for 2018, which I have right here, indicates that there's a lot of sediment in that tank. The tank was put in in 1994, so it's 24 years old. It's just about at its life. It's not there yet, but it's very darn close. And in order to remove that sediment, I just received a new quote, a current one, and it's $7,824, just to clean that tank. So when you take the problems that we've got, the cleaning, you know, and who else knows how long that tank is going to last?
Right.
You know, it's a situation that we've got to think about pretty seriously.
And that makes sense, and so, is there part, does this part of the project, does this particular replacement project include removal and disposal of that tank?
I'm sorry, but I'm not hearing you very well, Gus.
I said, does this replacement project include removal and disposal of the old tank?
It includes everything.
It does, okay.
It does.
Okay.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. So, one abstention, Counsel Manor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Airport Commission. Item 11, Vote to Adopt Mass General Law Chapter 39, Section 23D as applicable to adjudicary hearings held by the Plating Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Conservation Commission.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Steves?
This was on the last GenGov Agenda Item meeting, and as I said, I wasn't there, but I did talk to Dave about it a little bit.
I can.
And this is, I know that this has been an issue that Ken Comier brought forward, we kind of, I think we were even sort of talking about it at some of the boards even before Ken Comier was hired, so this has been floating around for a while. And the idea, for those of you that don't understand, I think, especially people in the audience, is this is what's called, an exemption to what's called the Mullins Rule, which would allow an individual on one of these boards to miss a session of a multi-session public hearing, provided that they catch up on that missed session by, and one of the issues we have to do is figure out how we want to do that, whether it has to be a full transcript, or video, or audio recording. And if they can catch up on that one session, they can still vote at the end of the hearing. If they can't, but other than that, by law, they can't. And it only allows one absence, you can't skip multiple parts of it. So, I know, I was actually talking to Andy about this earlier today, because I wanted to get some feel of whether he thought about, what he thought about applicability to the Board of Health, because there's other boards that this could be applied to, too, not just these three. It could apply to anybody who's a quasi-judicial. So I was asking him a little bit about that, and he raised a couple of concerns. One of them, and that I completely agree with, is that we need to figure out some way to set it up so that, he was specifically concerned, like if you've got a hearing that only goes two days, and somebody misses half of the first session, they're essentially missing half of the key information, which I can understand, that could be a concern. And you don't get the actual reaction from the audience and those kinds of things if you're not actually in the room, even if you're listening to it after the fact. So that could be an issue. And one of the other things that I think we should probably be doing is looking at setting up some sort of a requirement where it could maybe only be used once a year or something, so we don't see the same, we don't see like the same person routinely missing sections of public hearings. But I think, but in general, I like the idea of doing this as a whole, but I think we probably should look at expanding it to other boards as useful. I also talked to Kim about the fact that she does minutes for the Liquor Board, and she said she didn't think it needed to be used for the Liquor Board, because their sessions are usually one session long anyway. But I wanted to mention that. The Subcommittee did approve the idea 3 to 0.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify why it was these three boards, was because originally it was for everything, but after we had a nice conversation, it was a lengthy conversation, Mrs. Clemmons, myself, and Counselor Daniel, about this, we found out that the other department heads hadn't been talked to about this. And this is why it kind of led to these three boards. We could always amend this if we would like to, and Counsel Steves had also brought up about changing it up for the needs of our town, of course, the state law allows that to happen. But Mr. Comier brought up a lot of valuable points in there, and great write-up, and I think it's something that we need to have for down the road, and if I think, if, I'm okay with the three boards right now, but if we have to amend it down the road, then fine, it's not a battle worth fighting on that one. And it was a great conversation to be had, and I recommend this at this time, it was unanimously voted on. In favor? Thank you.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I appreciate the questions and the explanation provided by Counselor Adams. However, you know, having been at least vaguely familiar with this, I think I would be much more comfortable having it complete. We shouldn't be revisiting things when we're a council of seven. This should come to us in a completed manner, if you ask me. I'm not happy to cast a favorable vote and then have it come back and go back to Subcommittee to amend it. So I'm in support of implementing this, but it should be across the board. This Town Council could act in an adjudicatory capacity, in theory, when it comes to municipal hearings such as nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs, there could be multiples. I'm sure there are other examples out there, as you've alluded, with the Board of Health, et cetera, et cetera. So it would be my preference to support this when it is complete. So, in its current format, I'm not going to be supporting it, but it's not that I'm against the Mullins Rule. Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
Actually, that's kind of what I was thinking, too. I was thinking that, as I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, I think we really need to put something into the rules that cover how somebody can actually review the missing sessions. And I think we would need to throw some discussion, or have some discussion about, because that may involve actually having it be recorded by video, which I personally think is the best way to do it. I don't think reviewing just the minutes would work. A, because in most cases, the minutes are way too sparse to be useful, and we don't take transcripts anyway, which I think is what the law says, it has to be a transcript. So we don't do stenography or anything like that, and I wouldn't expect anybody to do that. So, I would actually make a motion that we send this back to Subcommittee for now, so that we can flesh out some of these details.
I'd second that.
And again, I'm also very much in favor of the concept, let's just finish it.
So it's a motion to refer back to General Government with a second discussion on that?
Yes, sir.
I tend to agree, given the fact that you, as Chairman, have now expressed concerns that weren't fully vetted at the Subcommittee. I support this in theory, but I believe that it should go back to Subcommittee to make sure that if you're going to develop rules, that the whole packet come forward so that we're all on the same page for further councils, further committees, so that they know exactly what the rules are going to be if we're going to do this. It's a great idea, but it needs to be pinned down with all the i's and t's crossed and dotted. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just one more quick note, and this is in no way reflective of the caliber of the individuals that attended that Subcommittee, but please do be reminded that there were circumstances that led to some of us not showing up that night.
I was one of them.
And you were one of them, as was I. I intended to not go after I saw your message. So I would be happy to see this be referred back to Subcommittee for one more look, and if it comes back in this current format after further vetting, then so be it. Thank you.
So it's a motion, a second, to refer back. Any further discussion? All those in favor referring back to General Government? Okay. Unanimous of all present, the matter will be referred back to General Government for further study. Item 12, Vote to Approve the Changes to the Department of Public Works' Operations Manager Salary Position as Presented in Operations Manager P/T9. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. While I had to step out a couple of different times during this particular topic at Subcommittee, it was very well-vetted, in my opinion. There was a lot of work that had gone into making this evaluation, analysis, and assessment by both the Director of Public Works and by the Town Manager, as well as Council. So, as I look at this, the menu, I'm sorry, the memo that was referenced during that Subcommittee meeting remains the active document, with the exception of the stipend, as I understand. And I'm definitely in support of moving this right along, and I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Did you have something that you wanted to comment on, or you're opposed to it?
I'm opposed, but I wanted to comment, but that's okay. I didn't make the Subcommittee meeting, but I just don't agree with a $100 stipend.
That was withdrawn.
Oh, it was withdrawn.
That's what you just said.
Oh, the stipend was withdrawn. Okay, then can I change my vote to support it? I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
So Counsel Manor has changed your vote. So, unanimous of all present. Vote to approve, item 12, vote to approve, no, it's 13, vote to approve the changes to Schedule 1 to include the Operations Manager P/T9.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Okay, this is just a class change. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present?
This time, my quick comment, actually, just for the clarification for people who are watching, we just shifted that job from an hourly to a salaried job, just so people know.
Thank you, Counsel. Like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and add Agenda Item 13A to the agenda to accept the resignation of Mark M. Jewell as an elected official of the Southbridge Housing Authority effective immediately as of February 4th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor suspend the rules? Opposed, unanimous of all present? Vote to approve, vote to accept the resignation of Mark M. Jewell, who has hereby submitted his notice of resignation as an elected official of the Southbridge Housing Authority effective immediately as of February 4th, 2019. immediately as of February 4. Any discussion on that? Counselor Manna?
I guess I just, I'm a little concerned, because I saw Max's video with Matty with regards to the open seats, and there's been a lot of resignations for elected positions, and I'm very, very concerned. I don't know why. I don't know what the trend is. I don't know if there is a trend, what's going on. So...
Certainly, that's understandable. We will seek elected officials for this. We were thanking for his service, but we will accept his resignation at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you. Counselors Forum. Counselor Daniel?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I want to thank Mr. Whitney for allowing me to tour the optical museum the other day. But I didn't, I didn't post it on Facebook as fast as I usually do, but I want to take this time to thank him. I'm going to be inviting him to the planning development Subcommittee meeting here in the near future. I want to thank Ken Comier for all of his service here in this town. This town has moved quite a bit, just short time you've been here, and that's because of you and your efforts. And though selfishly, I did say something about a pay raise for you really quick, I had to renege on that one, on that one. So, I do want to thank you for everything you've done. You are an exceptional member of this team, and I know you're going off to better things for yourself and your family. So, I wish you the best of luck. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor DePietro?
No thanks for you this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things tonight. First of all, I want to just make mention of a conversation I had today with Director Blakely, just in passing, that the kickoff meeting for the tie-in bond contract to develop operations contract bid specifications was held not too long ago. I was very pleased to hear that we were making progress on that, because there is a set timeline that we're trying to meet so that we can have a vendor chosen and in place to operate the sewer treatment plant here summertime. So, thank you for that quick note. I thought counselors might find that of interest. Next, I wanted to make mention that I was also glad to hear what the town manager said in regards to the kennel and dog shelter. I happened to run into the animal control officer today and had a very nice conversation, just asked a couple of quick questions. And I find that Caitlin Spencer is a fantastic resource, and she is a very good fit for that position. I've thought it all along. This is the first conversation I had with some specific questions, and she knows her business, and she is very good with the animals. So, I appreciate the hiring of such an individual into that capacity. So, I'll leave that one there. I want to let the public know that I'll be away, as I've already informed the council, the week of February 18, as I'm beginning a new position for work. I, too, want to thank Ken Comier for some fantastic progress for the last two years. I'm very sorry to see him go, but I'm also very happy and excited for him. I'm glad that he's back home in Massachusetts. I just wish we could have kept him a little bit longer. And Ken, all my best to you. You're a fantastic resource. You're a wealth of knowledge, and you're a pleasure to work with as well. And you put up with my nonsense when I get a little bit inquisitive. So, thank you. I also would like to just take a moment and thank the local Lions Club for that cartoon character breakfast this weekend on Sunday, Super Bowl Sunday. I had occasion to spend some time there, and I was just amazed. What a heck of a great turnout, what a great job by the Lions. So, I thank everybody that's involved with that. It was, it was, it was amazing. I haven't been a kid in a long time, so that was a lot of fun. So, I extend my thanks there. And otherwise, I wish everybody a wonderful couple of weeks, where it might be a little slow for town council before we dive into budget-type stuff and the rest of our work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I apologize for being late. And good luck to Mr. Comier. You will be missed. Just a reminder to people, we've had a lot of freeze thaw, snow, rain, whatever. Just keep your sidewalks cleared, and just be mindful of the black ice out there. I see people, sometimes when I come home at night from work, they're not walking on the sidewalks, they're walking in the street because of the ice and stuff. So, just be mindful of that. And congratulations to the Patriots. And Happy Valentine's Day. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick things. First of all, again, I want to reiterate what several people have said about saying thanks to Ken there. Good luck with your theater and your new job, and you've done a lot for both conservation and planning here in town. And hopefully, we will be able to find somebody who can take what you've done and run with it, and be able to do some of the other things that have needed to be done, that we would, had hoped you would be able to do, had you been here for another 10 years or so, which would have been nice. But good luck, and we'll miss you. Also, I just want to point out for tomorrow, 1, if you have any questions of your state rep, there's a representative from Peter Durant's office is going to be here in the town hall. So, you might want to reach out to them if you have questions at the state level. Also, on Friday at noon, there's a presentation at the hotel about the Southbridge Schools and Yukon Partnership. So, that'll be interesting to check out, because it's nice to see our schools getting involved with a good, reputable university, and we need more of those kinds of things. So, so it'd be interesting to see what they're doing with that. And that's all I had at the moment. The next meeting is Monday, February 25, at 7:00 here in the chambers.
Thank you. Item 16, vote to enter executive session according to Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection A3, to discuss strategy with non-union personnel for the town manager's contract. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining position, and the chair declares return to open session to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening.